Good evening and welcome to the October 8, 2019, meeting of the East Long Meadow Town Council. I'll open the meeting now with our customary pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And during this moment of silence, we ask that you keep our servicemen and women around the globe, as well as our first responders, in your thoughts this evening. Thank you. In accordance with Mass. General Law, this meeting is being audiotaped as well as videotaped. If there's anyone in the audience doing the same, would you kindly identify yourself? And I don't see anyone, so we can move on. I would entertain a motion now to go out of order, out of necessity this evening, to move to new business, to authorize the acting town manager to appoint Jean Quaglietti, our permanent town clerk.
I'll make a motion to move item D, new business, item one, authorize acting town manager to appoint town clerk to be moved up to our current position, and then immediately following to resume item three, public comments, and continue with the rest of the agenda in its order.
I'll second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. So, Mary, it's all yours.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. It's my pleasure to appoint Jean Quaglietti as the official town clerk, replacing the illustrious and esteemed Thomas Florence. And we have the special honor of having Attorney Larry Levine present at Jeanie's request and many other people's requests to provide the oath of office for her. So Larry, with no further ado.
Yes ma'am. Good evening.
Are we supposed to stand?
I don't know. It just seems appropriate.
So Jean, raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. I, Jean R. Quaglietti.
I, Jean R. Quaglietti.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support, obey.
That I will support, obey.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the Constitution and the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And all the bylaws on the charter.
And all the bylaws and the charter.
Of the town of East Long Meadow.
The town of East Long Meadow.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform and discharge the duties.
Perform and discharge the duties.
Of clerk of the town of East Long Meadow.
Of clerk of the town of East Long Meadow.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
And I accept said position.
And I accept said position.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, it's always nice to open on a very positive note. So that should be a good omen for the remainder of our meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on then, and returning to our normal order of business under public comments. Jeanie, do we have anyone registered for public comments? Thank you. Council comments, anyone here wish to make comment?
Yes, thank you. I called Kathy this morning to request some time this evening, just to bring an item back to the council. I received a phone call from Bruce Stebbins, former East Long Meadow resident, former school committee member, who has initiated previously a request to hopefully change the name of Pine Knoll to honor Coach Sylvia, who dedicated so much of his life for our kids in the citizenry of East Long Meadow. That being said, when the issue came before council, I was sitting out there, and Don made a lovely presentation. And the issue then sort of focused on establishing a standard or a policy with which to guide such a request. That sort of fell through the cracks. It's nobody's fault, we're busy, those things happen. With the phone call this morning, I contacted Don. I also contacted Donna Prather, Director of the Rec. Department, to see if perhaps we could come together as a community with some sort of standard, so that when these requests come before us, that we have a process. And so that is my request, that I have your blessings to form an informal partnership with Don and perhaps Donna to put some words together, so that this request or any other request, however the council votes, it will add some credibility to the decision that you make. So that's what I'd like to ask. Now, Don, I don't know if you have anything to add to that.
No, I mean, our previous town manager did some research, and I'm privy to have that research.
Perfect.
So that'll hopefully move us closer, so we can find some of the best practices of our sister communities here in this Commonwealth, and maybe be able to not have to reinvent the wheel, but just bring the wheel to the town.
Perfect.
Perfect.
Okay.
So we have your blessings?
You do.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay.
Any other comments?
Through the chair.
Yes.
I had the opportunity to review the minutes, and I realized at the last meeting that one of the motions I made was incorrect. I made a motion to appoint Ms. Richards to the position, which was to end June 30. According to our charter, the position has to end on the next town election. So I'm looking for guidance going forward. Should I make another motion now to appoint her until the next town election? Do we amend the last one?
I'm looking to our town council.
I get to think about this.
I think the minutes accurately reflect the motion that was in fact made, and that should not be changed. I think you need to make that new motion today.
Okay.
Then at this time, I would like to make a motion that we appoint Ms. Richards to fill the vacancy that was left by Joe Ford, which will start immediately and go through the next town election.
If you don't mind me chiming in, I suggest you don't make a new motion to do that, but rather you amend the previous motion, limited to the date, because she's already appointed, she's already been sworn in. So I would suggest you make a motion to change the date from the previous approved motion, from the 30th until the next town election. That way, it doesn't have the effect of just sketching the previous and then have to get it re-sworn in.
Exactly. So that would be mine.
Okay. I'll second that motion that I just. Whatever order you guys want to take.
Did you get that?
Did you get that?
Because those are two different motions.
Okay.
And the first one wasn't sanctioned for discussion.
Yeah, because I didn't think.
He cut me off.
Yeah, I didn't think it should be even getting to that point. I think the, I understand what he's trying to say, and I'll let you make the motion, is that the motion is not to replace the previous motion, but merely to amend the motion only limited to the date, which was June 30. And June 30 of that previous motion be replaced with the next town election. So where June 30, or the words "June 30" be replaced with the next town election.
That's the ending date.
Ending date.
Do we have that date, Jeanie?
Yeah, I'm looking it up. It's June 2nd.
I think it's 2nd, okay.
The charter specifically says the next town election, so I think we should stay with next town election. And that would be my motion that I've just made. Thank you, Don.
So if you're all following that.
Let me rethink that.
Is there a second to that motion?
Sure, I'll second it.
The motion's been made and seconded to amend specifically the date from June 30, 2020, to June 2, 2020. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Any other comments on the council?
So Marilyn was an abstention on that last vote.
I was. I mean, I can't even vote for myself. I got you. I got you. I wasn't here. I understand.
I have a question while we're writing council comments before we move on. Now that Jeanie's taken a new role, is Jeanie going to be joining us over here at some point in time?
Yes. I'm interviewing people to replace me as assistant town clerk. Should end those interviews by the end of the week. Realistically, somebody probably can't join until after the next meeting, so I can sit either side, because I'll be doing minutes and doing town clerk at the next meeting also. Probably 90% sure of that, so.
Thank you for the update.
Okay. That brings us to town managers' report.
And it's lonely over here, so I can't wait for that next vacancy to be filled. We have a lot going on. I did submit a report. I'm sorry, it wasn't last week. It wasn't really completed until yesterday. And since yesterday morning, a dozen other things could have been added to it that aren't there. But I just want to briefly give you the updates. We did clarify the language with the National Association of Government Employees Union, so we'll be posting their request to be the exclusive bargaining agent for the civil dispatchers. I'll post that by the end of the week, and it has to be posted for 20 days. We were able to work that out with the union representatives. So there won't be an election. It's a unanimous choice by the existing dispatchers, so. And it only applies to the full-timers, not any part-time personnel. And no management personnel as well. The main topic that I've been spending a lot of time on this past couple of weeks has been the subject of ambulance service for the town. As you know, Chief Morissette was here at your last meeting. And with some preliminary discussion about the acquisition of the second ambulance that he believes is necessary for the town's public safety needs. In the meanwhile, we've had several meetings with personnel from Hamden. Hamden has a significant problem in the sense that they have essentially no ambulance service in their community right now. So there's been discussions that Chief Morissette began with the town administrator in Hamden with Alert, I'm sorry, Action Ambulance, not Alert. Alert was the third vendor that was potentially in the picture. But in any case, Action has a proposal whereby they would provide an ambulance on-site in the town of Hamden, situated at their police department, which ambulance would provide backup service to the town of East Long Meadow while the acquisition of our second ambulance is pending. If you recall, Chief Morissette said last week, two weeks ago, that from the date of order, there's a nine-month, at a minimum, a nine-month wait for the vehicle to be on-site. So we have a good year, I think, ahead of us when we're going to operate with one ambulance. There's a significant amount of revenue, and I don't know if you want me to get into the weeds of all this tonight with you. I'm happy to discuss it at length or with any of you individually. But Action's proposal, and I don't have it in writing yet. We've asked them to submit it, and they haven't yet. But essentially, it would be to put an ambulance in Hamden 24 hours a day, seven days a week, which would service their needs. But they, last year, only had 350 transports. East Long Meadow, on the other hand, has close to 2,000, including intercepts from other communities. The revenue that the ambulance company makes from the insurance companies on reimbursements for these transports, annures to the benefit of the community that.
Hosts it.
That hosts it, and also, I don't also know the formula. I've asked for that. It varies depending on the insurance that the particular patient has, so Medicare reimburses at a lower rate than some private insurers. So there's no set formula, but there is a, I don't want to, I hate to classify it as a kickback, because that's suggestive of something that's a bit unorthodox. It's not that. It's a reimbursement to the community. Hamden will be able to have its ambulance, based in large part on the revenue that the ambulance company will make from the volume generated by East Long Meadow. So it's very much a hybrid situation. We would be acting, you know, in a sense, as good Samaritans and trying to be helpful to a neighboring community. The benefit to East Long Meadow would be that we would have a backup ambulance very close by, that we don't have now, for at least the time period while we're waiting for our own ambulance to be delivered. And that, you know, as I said, is nine months at a minimum, and you haven't approved it yet, so it's all of nine months. I have some concerns about the particulars of that proposal. You know, essentially, it would function as Hamden would be providing mutual aid back to East Long Meadow, and we would provide mutual aid to Hamden. There's some concerns about if the ambulance that's cited in Hamden is on a call in East Long Meadow, when Hamden gets a call, then what happens? My concern was about the money, frankly. I said, gee, if East Long Meadow's providing the volume that's creating the subsidy for this ambulance, then why should we surrender all of that? I don't want to be unneighborly, but I think it's a factor that we at least have to think a little bit about. The ambulance company quoted a figure that would have to be paid by Hamden upfront of $800,000 a year to cite this ambulance. It would be reimbursed, based on the numbers, over the course of a year or 18 months, based on the schedule of these. Insurance reimbursements. Then they cited a very similar proposal that they have underway now in the town of Hadley, where it's working exactly this way. Hadley had to come up with $600,000 or something upfront. And then they were reimbursed in intervals over the course of the fiscal, the next fiscal year, and they ended up with a net zero outlay. But still, you have to come up with the money upfront. And so there's a lot of dollars floating around, and I personally just want a greater comfort level, understanding exactly from whom and to whom they're flowing. As I said, we're very willing to help Hamden, and if the use of our volume helps them get ambulance service, I guess that's a good thing. So I don't want to be redundant, but I mean, I think we just need, I personally need to look through a written proposal, see where the numbers go. And frankly, it begs the question of the second ambulance in East Long Meadow. If we get service that we effectively don't pay for by a private company, query whether the revenue stream from all those transports that we're getting back theoretically from the ambulance company would be exponentially increased if the town had its own second ambulance. So now that I've probably thoroughly confused everyone in the room. There's another meeting tomorrow morning that I cannot attend due to a previous commitment. But the chief and town administrator in Hamden are going to meet with the police chief over there to try to fine-tune some of these details. And obviously, there'll be more to come, because I told chief this morning, go to the meeting with my blessing, ears open. Have conversation about whatever you want. But let's just talk about everything once the meeting is over. And it also raises the question, the issue of dispatch services, because there would be, one of the advantages of having this ambulance in Hamden argues for Hamden being the host of a regional dispatch, which is another subject that I know was on your radar a year, maybe two ago. I think it warrants further thought and consideration, but that's all I'm giving it at this point. We want to look at the budget numbers for what happens in East Long Meadow and what happens in Hamden, and if there's a savings by consolidating the two offices, whether here or there. I think it would be prudent to at least consider that. So there's a lot of issues and a lot of dollars on the table, and I think you just need to be advised that these are the conversations that are taking place. A little bit to my chagrin, a letter went out from one of our department heads to Hamden without a blessing from my office suggesting that we regionalize with Hamden. So that further stirs the pot in a situation that other conversations had been going on. And it's somewhat upsetting to me to have that happen, but we'll manage that. So ambulance is front and center. Dispatch is left, right field, somewhere out there, but it's part of the conversation. And so I just want to take a fresh look at all of that at some point when I have time to do it. Because it's obviously very important for both communities. So that's taken up a lot of time, and it's involved a lot of your high-level personnel, the two chiefs, the dispatch director, and their colleagues, our colleagues in Hamden. So we're going to try to get to a reasonable solution that works for both communities, but that's a little bit off in the future. I've had various conversations with innumerable board members from various commissions and boards that are reporting, I guess I'd have to characterize it as some dissatisfaction with the way things are done and their ability to get business done or to get responses. I'm glad we started off with such an optimistic, nice act here with Larry, because it feels like I'm just complaining, and I'm not.
It's been downhill.
It has, yeah. Okay. I could stop now. I think what happened is that there's a lot of pent-up frustration on a lot of levels in the community. A lot of people are, well, there incidentally have been several resignations from various boards, Maryland being one of necessity. There's been a resignation on conservation. There's been another resignation on the community preservation, again, of necessity, because someone's a registrar, it can't be both. So we have a lot of those vacancies coming up. But the tenor of the conversations and the appointments have been, to me, I guess the best generic term I could use is that people are very frustrated. And I don't know if that's just because I'm an interim and they know it, and so everybody's got this pent-up conversation that they're dying to have, and they want results, and they want them now, and I can't give them those results. I can absorb some of their frustration and listen to their problems. But that's been the overwhelming tenor of things in the last month and a half. I'm hoping, I'm confident that's going to change as the months go by. I'm very confident that it will. But, you know, if you hear things through the grapevine or from your friends or your colleagues, don't be surprised, because while they're probably not 100% accurate on the facts, the buzz is out there. And I just think there's a lot of people that are looking for solutions, and they're looking for them yesterday. So I'm trying to be as responsive as I can to residents and to board members. But, you know, a lot of times, the complaints are about things that happened long before I got here. And so just trying to stay abreast of the current business day-to-day. I don't like to make excuses to people, so I just tell them I'll get into it as quickly as I can, but it may not be for a week or two. We are working together with the town clerk's office and finance to finalize the procurement on those voting machines that have been of interest to many of you. I think it was a procurement problem. I believe what happened was oral quotes were solicited for those machines eight or nine months ago. The free cash appropriation that occurred, or whatever the appropriation was, I believe it was in June of this past year, made those quotes stale. And the quotes were not sufficient in number. You're supposed to get three, and there were two. And there were just some discrepancies that I'm discovering, and that's why the voting machines haven't been purchased yet. So Jeanie and I spoke at length today, and we're streamlining the request. I think we can go out and solicit quotes again and streamline it. The clerk's office favored a vendor that was not the low bidder the last time. Not that the bids were effective anyway, because they were stale. But if that's the vendor they want to use, I think we can go out for solicitations again in a streamlined fashion and get it done. My initial thought was we were going to have to issue a request for proposals, which is lengthier, more, not as cost-effective. It allows you to vet different things and weigh with a committee the prospective proposals of the different bidders. But I don't think we need to do that. So that too has taken a fair amount of time. The other procurement issue, I might be jumping ahead, so maybe I should wait. It goes to another matter that's on your agenda later on, the E360 matter. So not to take all night, the local emergency planning committee met, had a lot of discussion about the security of the buildings in town and the infrastructure in the event of another disaster, which hopefully we won't have. But the lack of generators at the town hall was something that was news to me, and it's somewhat concerning to me that if there were a major outage, we wouldn't be able to function in that building. But maybe that's not the end of the world if there's a major tragedy going on. Kathy Hill and I met with the Business West Magazine reporter. I did update her after our conversation. Kathy was great. She asked to talk to me, but of course, I said, I think you'd be better off talking to somebody with longer tenure in the community and certainly a better understanding of what's pending and what has happened and what's about to happen. So Kathy was gracious enough to sit with me and the reporter. And then she had a few follow-up questions, which I tried to clarify for her yesterday. So I think it'll be a very favorable article. She seemed to be thrilled with the fact that your president was her former middle school principal. She was delighted.
Which only made me feel all the more old.
She was delighted to see who was in the interview room, and it wasn't me. The health department did their flu clinic last Thursday. They had tremendous results. They had 50 vaccines more than last year. They did it several different sites. Amy Petrofsky was very pleased with the outcome. And they had a customer survey afterwards, and they had like an 80%, four or five out of five rating. And otherwise, we're just percolating along, trying to just keep the lid on things every day and take care of the walk-ins and the normal course of business that occurs each day. So happy to spend any time with any of you, any time, to delve deeper if you wish. So that's it for me tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to item number six, approval of minutes. In your packet, you have the September 24 open session minutes for the 5:00 p.m. meeting. If you haven't had an opportunity to review them, would you please look at them now, so that we are able to approve them? If there are no objections, I'll entertain a motion to approve the September 24 open session meetings for the 5:00 o'clock meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the September 24 5:00 meeting, as printed.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Abstentions?
One abstention.
Thank you. As well, we have in our packets the September 24 open session meetings for the 6:00 p.m. meeting. And again, if you'd please look at those for a moment, if you haven't had the chance already. Are there any additions, corrections? Are there any additions, corrections? Yes? Correction? We're all set. You're good, okay. Anyone else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the September 24th open session meetings for the 6:00 p.m.
So, I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the open session minutes of the September 24th, 2019, 6:00 p.m. town council meeting.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Under item seven, communications, correspondence, and announcements, I have one announcement, and that is to let everyone know that based on Marilyn Richards' assumption of the open council seat and Mr. O'Connor's gracious decision to remove himself from the Planning Matters Subcommittee so that a quorum of counselors would not occur. It left an opportunity to appoint a resident to that committee. And I'm happy to say that we, I've appointed Connor O'Shea to the, did I say financial matters?
No, you said, I was listening to you.
Okay, the Planning Matters Subcommittee.
He could do that, too.
Yes, he's good in math as well, so that's just for the record that he's been appointed.
Excellent.
And I understand he's attended a meeting already?
He's a great addition. Thank you for stepping up. We appreciate having Connor on board.
Okay, we have no public hearing scheduled this evening, but Mr. Maynard, our council, would like to make a statement.
Yeah, for the record and for its interest, Madam Chair, you may recall that at the September 10th meeting this year, earlier this year, there was on for public hearing a zone change petition by petition of PLH LLC represented by Attorney Martin, which, with respect to a rear Pease Road parcel, which parcel and a proposed solar project on that parcel are the subject of litigation with the town in a land court proceeding. An agreement was reached at that September town council meeting to continue the public hearing until this date, October 8th, which is the first date following a status report to the land court in that litigation. In that status report, the court was informed, among other things, that the petitioner, with respect to the zone change petition, had submitted to the planning board, or will submit to the planning board, a site plan for review by that planning board. The planning board has agreed to, or will review that site plan proposal at its November 19th meeting, provided submissions are made in a timely way before that meeting. Mr. Martin has, we don't need to argue about whether or not the continued public hearing should be on this agenda or not, or why it isn't, because Mr. Martin has graciously agreed to further continue that public hearing until the first meeting following that planning board review of the site plan. That is the first town council meeting following November 19th, which because of Thanksgiving Week, I understand will be...
Is there, do we have a, I may have misspoken. We may have a November, I'm looking at you.
It'll be the 24th, I believe, Tuesday of that.
26.
26, I'm sorry. It'll be the Tuesday of Thanksgiving Week.
Well, we would still meet. It's only around Christmas that we adjust our schedule.
Whether or not there's that November meeting, Mr. Martin informs me, he won't be available that Thanksgiving Week. So, he has agreed to put off the public hearing until the 10th of December.
The 1st December.
The expectation being that that zone change petition would, would be withdrawn if the site plan proposal is proceeding through the approval process to the petitioner's satisfaction.
Fair enough.
So, I would request that that public hearing be continued to that date, that is December 10th, with Mr. Martin's agreement.
Did it say the time? 6:00?
Well, they start at 6:30 usually. It's the first one goes at 6:30. So, that will be moved to, or continued to December 10th at 6:30.
So, we're going to need a motion to do that and a vote?
Yes.
All right, I'll make a motion that we continue the matter of Zero Pease Road, which is scheduled for tonight by agreement of the parties to December 10th, 2010, at 6:30 p.m.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, so, did you, Don, you seconded?
He made the motion, so...
Yeah, you seconded.
Okay, I moved it, but, just for clarification purposes.
Is it seconded?
Yeah, I made it, he seconded.
Mike came.
Say second.
Second. So moved and seconded.
I don't want to come back in two weeks, okay?
Oh, my gosh.
Okay, now we're moving to orders of the day, like it or not.
There you go.
Our first order of the day are licensing matters. We have an approval of a one-day liquor license for St. Luke's Church for a Unico Porcetta Dinner fundraiser for the East Long Meadow High School scholarships, and to be held on November 8th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. The application is in your packet. I should also note that the fee has been waived because it is for a fundraiser that directly supports our youth in the community. If you have no questions, I will entertain a motion to approve that one-day liquor license.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a one-day liquor license for St. Luke's Church for Unico Porcetta Dinner fundraiser for East Long Meadow High School scholarships, with the fee waived as requested on November 8th, 2019, between 6:00 and 8:00 p.m. in the evening.
Motion's been made.
Seconded.
And now seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously. As well, we have a request for an approval of a one-day liquor license for St. Luke's Church, also for a Unico Porcetta Dinner, to be held on February 7th, 2020, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. That application is in your packet, and the fee, again, has been waived because it, the money will go toward scholarships for our high school students.
I just had a question, just more on a point of clarity. I mean, I'm, I'm fine with this, don't get me wrong. I'm just curious, how far in advance can applicants put in for liquor licenses? Somebody wants one in 2021 for the sake of discussion, or is there, is there a cutoff?
I don't know if I have, I don't have an answer for that.
Maybe when we add our next liquor.
Yeah. He submitted these...
Back in July.
July, and I pulled up. Because you can actually approve the second one contingent upon his passing the building inspections that Kevin does at the end of the year if you want to. Maybe if you're concerned about the length of time.
I think that's probably just, you know, that would be a good idea since we're rolling into 2020.
Or we could ask for it to...
No, 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 and this is asking for a fee waiver, too, right?
This is for the petitioner's incredibly organized nature.
All right, then I'll make a motion, if it's appropriate, to approve the one-day liquor license for St. Luke's Church for a Unico Porcetta Dinner fundraiser for East Long Meadow High School scholarships, with the fee waived as requested on December, for December 7th, 2026.
February.
February, apologize. February 7th, 2020, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., with the proviso that the facility passes the annual review, was it approval? What's the thing, Jeannie?
The building inspection.
The annual building inspection, usually performed at the end of the calendar year.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve a one-day liquor license for St. Luke's for the Unico Porcetta Dinner to be held on February 7th, 2020, with the provision that the building passes its annual inspection in December. All those in favor?
Aye.
Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously. And now we are to the point of financial matters, and we have one issue there this evening. The update of expenditures related to the General Code bylaw project. You have some backup information in your packet, and I'm going now to look to either, Mary, you can speak to that, or you, or someone from the bylaw Subcommittee?
Well, I'll go first if you want. We received an invoice for $1,997, I believe, that was attributed to the fact, according to the vendor, that certain materials hadn't been received by them, and so we did some backpedaling because we were under the impression that the clerk had forwarded everything. It was, the revision to all these documents were through Google Docs, which taxes everyone's patience, if not internet skills, except for you maybe, Connor. In any event, we can't track down any proof that the documents left the town of East Long Meadow to go to the vendor in a timely fashion. I'm not saying they didn't, we just can't find the proof of it. The vendor is now saying, "So, we need another $1,997 to incorporate the revisions that you've now sent us, albeit late." So, my first thought was, for $2,000, let's just pay it. This is a big project that's been going on for years. What's the, I mean, it's, it's not pocket change, but nevertheless, it's not worth dragging our feet on. However, I said that, or that was my first impression without having seen the underlying contract, which is $9,820. So, this adjustment puts you over the $10,000 threshold, and my understanding is the procurement for this project was by sound business practices, up to $10,000. All you have to do is solicit oral quotes, not even written. And that's what was done here. So, the, by virtue of this $2,000 change order, if you will, for lack of a better expression... It's a change order. It puts us over, puts us close to $12,000, which then creates the possibility that the auditors would have a fault finding or that someone could complain. I was racking my brain thinking, well, maybe they're a sole source provider, in which case you can avoid some of the procurement issues. We didn't get an answer to that yet. I think we're of the opinion now that they're not a sole source, even though they're servicing more than a third of the communities in Massachusetts that are doing this project. So, it kind of just creates a dilemma. We don't want to start over because then we lose the benefit of the first $9,800 that the town spent. Because that, if we were to rebid it, because the, the whole cost is now in a position where we'd have to get written quotes, query what happens to the investment that's already been made. I personally don't want to...
Besides 14 calendar months of work.
Well, that too, yes. And, further complicating it, the town clerk today showed me another invoice. It's not an invoice, it hasn't been billed yet, but they're waiting for the town to approve an additional $3,500, give or take, for some additional revisions. Help me with that, Jeannie, do you remember what?
The supplemental supplements, I think, the stormwater rules, subdivision rules, and it was going to be the health regulations, but they're so archaic, they wouldn't even worth having this part of this. So, the paper streets list, bylaw committee, do you remember that discussion that wanted to include that, too? So, it's more like supplemental attachments to...
Right.
But important, can you please come up to the microphone? That's Mr. Matty signaling.
The stormwater regulations were not included.
Were are new because they weren't, weren't...
They weren't ready.
Yeah.
In existence, for our use, at the time that we awarded the contract.
There was an organizational analysis, I looked further into it later this afternoon, where the former town clerk made notes at the time he was able to do that for any other attachments that he wanted to include, which were those three things I just listed. And in that document, the vendor said that they could provide an estimate for whatever they wanted to add on, the town wanted to add on. So, there was a gap in communication where that organizational analysis was sent to General Code, but I think they're waiting for more town approval, from what communication I can find, before they can provide an estimate. So, that $3,500 additional sum for the additional documents is still kind of hanging out.
That would bring the total amount to close to $15,000.
Correct.
And, big picture, it speaks to the deficiencies in our internal communications in town. This procurement stuff shouldn't happen. It's not that, I mean, it's complicated, but conversation will ameliorate that. And I think, in fairness to the former clerk, I think he was doing what he thought was appropriate at the appropriate time. And, and then when, when the, when his work was finished, and now Jeannie's following up on that, then we find out that, oh no, this should have been done this way. And, we have to change those, well, we don't have to do anything. I would strongly suggest that those things be changed, and they can be easily managed. And I think some of these problems could be averted in the future.
Can you be more specific? Because we do have an individual who is in charge of procurement for us.
Yeah, and, no, I appreciate that, and this, I guess what I mean is I don't think there was communication on a regular, timely basis on different projects, these two among them, the voting machines and this E-360.
Okay, I get it.
Timely. So, that everyone's doing their jobs as they see them, but they're not talking to each other. And those projects are then, the clerk's office thinks, "Okay, well, I'm fine, I've got my two quotes." Now, granted, they were in January and funds weren't approved on the voting machines until June. So, it just, you know, it's, it's a problem that we don't need to have. And, maybe if there had been conversation along the way, and I wasn't here, so maybe there was conversation along the way and someone forgot to record it, or to report it, or to act on it. I think we can make those things better, immeasurably better, in a short period of time. But, in the meanwhile, we have these problems of $5,000 overage. I'd like to do some research on it because I, you know, part of me wants to just say, "Let's just do it, let the chips fall." I mean, but I don't want to knowingly violate procurement law. So, I'm going to try to find a way, maybe with the esteemed council's help, or the IG's office, or the AG's office, or somebody, to see if there's some exception. And I do still want to investigate the single-source procurement and things of that nature, but, but we still have a problem. Because that project's not finished. It's not going to be finished without the extra payment of that $1,997.
And it's a valuable project, and we are this far.
We can't not have this project done.
Right.
Right.
So, through the chair, you appointed me to be a member of the bylaw committee.
So fix it, Rob.
It's Rob's fault.
And so, I cannot tell you how many hours I've already spent going through the documents. We're talking a 264-page workbook that, it, it's absolutely incredible the amount of work that's being done with this. If we could come up with the $2,000, it's, obviously it's necessary. It's basically the department head's input into the whole system. As far as the other $3,500 that I had seen, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeannie, that's for them to review those additional documents.
And include them in the...
Make analysis, recommend changes.
It was simply to attach them, I believe.
To include them in the full book?
Yes.
The full binder?
Yeah.
I'd like to look into that further because I did find in one of the documents that they said that they would slip it into the full code unchanged the way we have it, and there's no cost for that. But, to go through their legal analysis and tell us what's wrong with it, that's the $3,500 estimate. But again, that's something where, at 2:00 in the morning, your mind starts playing tricks on you, and, "Did I actually read that, did I? Well, where was it?"
And I did call them because the original three documents that, that the former town clerk had requested be added in was the stormwater regs, the subdivision rules, and the health regs. So, I said, "Well, we decided not to do the health regs, but want to include the paper streets. So, will it be the same because it's three supplements?" And she said, "Well, it depends on the size of the documents." So, they do give us quotes without much identification.
Backup or explanation? But those are three very... But those are three very esoteric and complicated areas. Subdivisions, stormwater regulations, I mean, they're very complex. And the paper streets, as you know, is a problem that's front and center to the people who live on those paper streets. So I don't think there's any question that the money would be well spent. But I'm, I'm too raw to the subject. I haven't done a deep dive into the history of it. And so my thoughts are really just my, sort of my initial reaction to the proposal. And obviously, I don't want to make a decision based on limited knowledge, but.
Through the chair.
Mm-hmm.
I was involved in those discussions early on as a member of the bylaw committee. And there was no mention of any additional cost at that time. I've got several points I want to make. So in the review that they've asked us to do by December thirteenth, Rob.
Yes.
I've been going through the documents as well. And when the mention of this multicolor document came up, it brought back memories of a conversation that we had way back when, when it was submitted to us. And that it should not have gotten to us in that format. And we have not vetted that. The bylaw committee has not looked at that document. So what I'm trying to do is simplify the process is that that multicolor document with the changes by the department heads has not been vetted or looked at by the council or the bylaws committee. So my recommendation is to put that aside. There is a box that we've been checking, I don't know if you've checked it or not, in the current document for E-360 is that to move it off until after implementation. So I think this is one of those cases, we can continue on with the, with the project. And we can look at this as an addition, because this is not going to be something that's one and done. This is a project that's going to be ongoing. As we change, those documents are going to have to change. So this will be an ongoing maintenance of that system. So we can, I think we can put that, safely put that aside. Because there were a lot of changes in there by department heads that, and at first brushed, I didn't agree with. And I don't know why we're going to be putting it in the document to have to take it out, which is going to cost us money. So my point is, let's continue with the ninety-eight. And depending on what your research finds out, if there's any issues with adding to that. I know they're on state contract, so that might help as well. But it's still over the ten thousand.
Yeah, it would be.
So let's put those in, and let's put, I mean, we don't have to wait forever to do that, but we could do that fairly quickly. We added in later, once we vetted it through the bylaws committee, and looked through it and decided what gets incorporated, what does not. That's the first piece. The second piece is with this, with the new changes that we thought were going in, they're not going in, they're going to be put as addendums. I remember that conversation where I thought they were all going to go in as addendums into the document. But like Rob mentioned, there's, I don't think there's anything in print that says that.
Not that I've read across.
Yeah.
It sounded to me, through the chair, it sounded to me from reading, and I tried to go back through because they listed a lot of the different documents that we had asked for an estimate, to go through all of this and give us a legal analysis, what's good, what isn't good, what would they suggest for changes and all. And that would cost thirty-five hundred. But if you don't want to do any of that, and you just want to slip it in the back the way it's written.
That's what I would hold off on.
That I would think there was no charge.
It's still over the ten thousand with the, with the two thousand.
Right.
So if you're going to go a different route to get the end result, going over the ten, you might as well add the other ones in now.
If that's, if that's agreeable to the IG or the AG.
Well, I, I, it strikes me that this can't be a unique situation for.
My thoughts, exactly.
A town. That something that is under ten thousand is awarded because it doesn't hit the threshold. And a change order, as we all know, if you've built anything, those happen regularly. So in a project, to say there's a change order, to me is just the customary nature of a large undertaking, that you couldn't foresee when you awarded the contract. It just strikes me that the attorney general's office would view that as you didn't intentionally violate procurement practices. Or an auditor ought to be able to say that.
No, I agree with you. I think I just wanted to have the time to.
We have to get it confirmed, right, right.
Get solid footing on those issues before we make a decision, before you make a decision.
Through the chair. Jeannie, did I see the document come through already done?
It's done. The Google Doc revisions have been incorporated and I looked through it. I looked through the workbook, and the workbook is very specific. When it has, you can either check off revise as suggested, revise as follows. It incorporates, you know, Kevin Duquette suggests this. It even cites who suggested it, according to those comments. It's very specific, and I think it's almost easier to figure out who's going to do what part. I think it would be a mistake not to include that at this point. And I think way back, the council talked about how you would not have to have a public hearing for each bylaw. You would do it as a whole. Do you remember that, Mike?
Yes, I remember that.
I remember you talking about that. So all the work that department heads did.
We do one, one public hearing, and if there's twenty-two changes, we address each one right in a bullet point.
Right, right.
Through the chair. So what I'm hearing is that the document that we've been working on for two and a half weeks is no, is no longer valid? And that this, there's been a replacement already made to that with these additions?
Well, not many people have worked on it.
Right, the workbook.
We, we.
Has been created.
Right, but we told the department heads to stop because we realized this. So not much work is done, done by the department heads.
Well, we're still moving ahead on it because we have a deadline on the bylaws committee to get it back to you.
And that's why I sent the email to the bylaw committee that we should still meet on the seventeenth and definitely extend the deadline. And it's been offered to be extended by the vendor to at least another two weeks after the first of the year. There's no urgency right now, I think the urgency is to get an accurate end result and figure out the procurement part, to get that done.
There's no penalty to us because I seem to remember them being very adamant about getting that done in a timely manner.
They offered to extend it.
Yeah.
Because of the confusion there about which document or not.
And there's been no penalty mentioned. They've been actually very approachable and good about it.
We can fix it, it's just going to take a little bit of thought.
Just how, right.
We must look at doing it right the first time, but.
Well, that's always a good strategy, but sometimes it doesn't work that way.
It's not like we're paying more for what we're getting. We're, they're giving us a price for what we're getting, which is still going to be a very valuable resource for residents.
We can do without it.
Employees.
Right.
Right, it's just we hit a little bump in the road.
I think we've all agreed that it's an important project and it's something that we look forward to seeing on our website.
Right.
For the residents and ease of use. Right now, the information is all over the place.
The attraction of the whole proposal was the fact that it would bring us into 2020, you know, up to the minute.
Right.
And the ease of use for just the layperson who wants to investigate a bylaw about, can I park a big truck on a side street?
And then the ease after, once we pass bylaws, we send that to general code. They pop it right in where it goes and they update everything.
It's ongoing, we do pay an annual maintenance fee.
I think it's a thousand dollars a year.
Yes, a thousand or twelve hundred, but that's typical with any kind of software arrangement.
Right.
So through the chair, they've already made the changes? The colored document that I recall that was pretty messy?
Yes, that came Friday afternoon, I just, because of a lot of things, couldn't even look at it.
But we haven't agreed to pay it.
That's why I sent the bylaw committee that email saying, this is what's going on. Did you guys get the email?
I've been reviewing it online, through E-code, under the documents.
I know I'm no longer on the bylaw, but.
It's down there and it was like, oh, okay, look at all these colors.
Yeah.
But we didn't pay for it, so they're, but they're doing the work, expecting payment. That makes it even more complicated.
Well, it's, yeah, I mean, it has a solution, I just don't know what it is for today.
But I appreciate that optimism.
Yeah, good, there's always a solution.
Just an update.
No, there's always a solution, yeah.
Well, we debated about whether we would even put it, all this information before you tonight just because of the confusion. But I think you're better off knowing what we're dealing with in terms of the problems and why we have them. So we'll fix them.
Fair enough. So we don't need to take any action tonight, just hang on for the ride?
Yes.
And the bylaw committee, you know, once I hear back from everybody, will meet on the seventeenth as planned and go forward from there? I think that's the original date we had. I haven't heard back from anybody, so in Pat's away.
Yes.
And better to wait for him to come back because he's the chair of that committee. And President Hill?
Yes.
I'm probably going to have to be appointed as a member of the bylaw committee and the licensing committee to replace the former town clerk at some point. Okay? Okay.
I will do that.
And writing for you?
You're up and running. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Oof, is right. Moving to old business, number one, a recommendation of the town council planning matters subcommittee of the mixed-use district bylaw and rezoning of 330 Chestnut Street from industrial garden park to mixed use. I don't know if we have a recommendation coming from you or more of an update.
No, we're basically working methodically through the, through the draft. We had a slightly north of two-hour meeting on Monday and. Yesterday, yeah, time flies when you have a fun one. And we're going to have another one in a couple of weeks. Also at the school committee room, we had, it was very well attended. We had full attendance of the subcommittee, plus we had the chair of the planning board, Russ Denver. We had Ty Richards there. We also had Connie, as well as the interested parties from the, from the, who have their product, developers, two of their attorneys, and both John and Joe. So we're working through it.
Good, okay. Number two, amend the September tenth, two thousand nineteen, vote from appointment of part-time human resource consultant to appointment of part-time human resources employee. This is more verbiage than anything?
It is.
Okay.
On the tenth, when you authorized me to appoint Elaine Grimaldi, I think I, I'm certain I used the word consultant to describe her. And in point of fact, she doesn't fit the IRS ramifications and definition of that. And I knew that then, I don't know why I misspoke. But in any case, she signed a contract as an employee, but it's limited twelve hours a week for a short-term, co-terminus with my appointment. Hopefully she'll stay, but that's a subject for another day. So it's just a matter of which, which line item she would be paid from. So if you would be kind enough to amend that motion and allow her that status, then that'll eliminate that problem.
Through the chair, is this the motion under old business here, on C?
I am looking to.
C two.
Yes, C two.
Okay, I, I'll make that motion. I move to amend the vote taken on September tenth, two thousand nineteen, from authorizing acting town manager Mary McNally to hire a part-time human resources consultant to authorize acting town manager Mary McNally to hire a part-time human resources employee.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there further discussion? Then all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, moving to new business, we've already taken care of appointing our town clerk, which now brings us to the profile statement developed for us by the consultant managing the town manager search. And that should be in your packet as well. You've all seen this already. Maybe it's not in your packet because I sent it to you yesterday.
It is.
Directly last evening when we.
My own version.
We received it from Mr.
I haven't looked at that, do you want me to leave while you talk about this?
I think it might just, it's prudent just to step out for a few minutes.
Yeah, okay, no problem.
It's a free break. There's no charge for the break.
But don't go far.
I'm wondering, I should, I should just maybe give this back to Jeannie so I won't be tempted to read it.
So we have it before us, you've each had an opportunity to.
I'm sorry, but I've been tied up all day. I have not seen this document. And I've had a number of discussions with Sharon from this community paradigm about changes. I don't know if they're in here, and I'm not going to spend the time looking through it right now. I know you said you sent it last evening, but I've been tied up all day.
Well, it was, it was given back to me by Bernie Lynch last evening by email, based on all of the changes that each of you recommended in your phone conversations.
Right.
Again, I don't know that. And my concern is that we're breaking, we're breaking our precedent, which is, we should have all this stuff on Friday prior to the meetings, we have time to review it.
In a perfect world, yes, but under the circumstances that time was needed to reach out to this, well, I don't, I don't know if Pat Henry was approached, if he was. Actually, I do know that because I think he did confirm that in an email.
Yeah.
And so we, yes, that's a rule that we kind of formulated so that we'd have information in a timely manner. But in this case, we weren't able to receive the document until yesterday. Regardless, we still have to, at some point, approve it. And you'll notice that on the page three of the profile statement, it's, it's a combination of profile of East Long Meadow as a community and a, an opportunity to apply for the ideal candidate. With a, the way it's written right now, candidates may apply up through November ninth at 5:00 P.M. That's predicated on the fact that the presumption that we would approve it tonight and Mr. Lynch would move it out to his listserv and his, the network that he uses to recruit professionals with that thirty-day window. So I think he's presuming tomorrow's, or today's, tomorrow's the ninth. So thirty days would make it November ninth.
So through the chair, I know Tom is concerned with regards to being able to read it. And if this is something we want approved, I would make the motion that we take at least a ten-minute recess to have time for him to actually read through and see if his changes were incorporated.
The one piece that I noted to you was that Mr. Lynch left the salary range blank.
Right.
And certainly that is up for every client that he works with, that's a unique situation. And depending on the profile of the town and the community's financial resources, that number's going to change. As I said to you in an email last evening, he has made a recommendation for a salary range for what he feels the industry and the market in Western Massachusetts will bear. It's also in line with a salary range that our sister community, Long Meadow, has used in its recent search for a town manager. So that's something we have to make a decision on tonight as well. It can't, it can't go to press with annual salary, dot, dot, dot. It has to have a number attached.
Is that something we do in open, or is that?
We can speak about that in open.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not a secret.
Ralph made a motion, and I'd like to second that motion, which is to take a ten-minute recess so I can read the document.
Sure.
So I've made the motion.
I second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to recess for approximately ten minutes for the benefit of some counselors to take another quick read of this information and come back to the table. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are in recess for about ten minutes. Okay, we are back in from recess, sounds like we're at the schoolyard. A little flashback there.
Does somebody want to invite Mary back?
But we're not finished. So returning from recess, we are prepared now to discuss the profile statement. So, returning from recess, we are prepared now to discuss the profile statement, and the floor is open to whomever would like to suggest any edits, if so, or not, and then we can adopt whatever we feel is appropriate.
You or I? Go for it, Tom.
We'll just go around the room.
Yeah. Well, I'd like to start with the first one, and that's on page one, the annual salary. I think, we can't, as briefly mentioned, we need to put a number in there. We can't leave it blank.
Absolutely.
So, one thirty-five thousand, plus or minus. And as the statement reads, attractive compensation, including commensurate with qualifications and experience. I think that gives us some lead.
Yes, and it's in there. It's already stated there, commensurate with...
So, that...
What was the number you stated?
One thirty-five.
Okay.
Plus or minus one thirty-five?
Right.
Through the chair, I'm not gonna repeat what Tom said, but I'm on board with his comments in the pay structure.
I was in favor of a range, starting at one thirty-five, but if the plus or minus takes care of that, I'm happy to just leave it at that.
That is how apparently he, this company expresses salary.
Okay.
So, plus or minus one thirty-five, it implies there's a range there.
Okay.
All right, we'll make that change. You're good?
Yep.
I'm good. Is there any other thing that needs... Yes, we did speak about some...
Yes. Through the chair on page two, under the capital planning. It goes into explicit numbers as far as us replacing a high school. I would just like to see the language maybe adjusted slightly to say that Towns High School is in need of either replacement, repairs or replacement, which would be a significant cost to the town.
Okay. So, instead of stating an approximate dollar value for a proposed replacement, which could come higher or lower, and we don't even know yet. I mean, we're presuming into the future as well as what a reimbursement rate may be. So, I'm in favor of me, just simply stating that the Towns High School is aging and is expected to need replacement or significant rehabilitation within...
And I would add, or it could be an addition.
Yeah.
Just so we're covered all over.
Replacement, addition, rehabbing. Well, rehab could mean also a new wing. In the foreseeable future, does that, is that, it's, you want it to have some meaning without making it so vague that people say, well, do you need a school or not?
The only reason I brought that up is because some of the meetings that I had with Gordon, you could be rehabbing some of what we have...
Right.
And building, you know, an additional wing. It could be a combination of anything, but it's gonna be a significant financial impact on the community, and that's the point.
Significant financial impact.
Resulting in a significant financial obligation to the community.
Correlated against our mailroom.
Maybe we should also mention what, that we are consistently requesting reimbursement from, within the state, so they don't think it's a, the entire, if you don't have that in there, it does, you know, it appears that we're biting off the entire amount.
Yeah.
Right.
The explanation says that initially.
Right.
I think just, maybe just, leave it the way, it needs replacement within a few years, and East Long Meadow will be responsible for a significant portion...
A significant portion of the anticipated cost.
Anticipated cost, yeah.
Significant portion of the anticipated cost.
Yeah. I think that's more accurate than we, because, you know, my understanding is, you know, certain things like sports fields, swimming pools, things like that are not gonna be included.
Not included. Not a tennis court, not a pool.
To be truthful, I mean, if I were a candidate looking at this profile, it would not scare me away because I didn't know what the reimbursement rate was going to be for the town. You'd say, oh, okay, well, it's a high school that's applied for a project. Anything else?
He's biting his tongue back there, our cameraman there.
Mr. Mack, you're more than welcome to offer a remark, response?
No, I would just also say, I would think that any candidate that you would wanna seriously look at, that wouldn't even be an issue.
I agree.
Yeah.
They would know.
They know that, yeah, right.
Already know more than is gonna be an issue.
Right.
We certainly hope so.
So...
You're right.
I just have one last comment, page two.
Yes.
The FY nineteen tax rate is twenty fifty-five and expected to increase. I don't, I don't expect anything to increase. I don't like that word.
The FY tax rate is twenty fifty-five.
Period.
Period. Just strike the rest because we can't look into that crystal ball either.
When is it being set? It's right about now typically, right?
It's now, soon.
Yeah. We get the...
Hopefully, we can keep it the same or go down.
Right. We have to wait till the recap is done.
Soon, right?
Right. Anything else?
I haven't seen the parking lot empty near library ever. Like that picture, it's just, there's not a card sign.
That's the high school. I think that's the high school.
No, this one?
The first picture.
Oh, the first one?
Yeah, that's library.
Library.
That could be an artist's rendering, too.
It could be.
Nah, Sunday.
As a sidebar, Marilyn and I were talking about the important links, enhancing East Long Meadow to improve business, commercial, and industrial zoning. That was something we were working on back in the day when Leslie Fredette was on the planning board, and it had so much promise, but we got shut down at town meeting.
Actually, it never made it to town meeting. We had a huge public hearing.
That's right.
And the town came out in full force, did not want, I mean, what we were gonna do was redistrict the center of East Long Meadow, make a town district, and then have a combination of a business, commercial, district to enhance different uses and a different look and feel, and it just went over very poorly.
Yeah, I'm just curious how they found the ghost of Christmas past here.
Right, so there's not a real substance to, I mean, other than the nice words, nothing's been adopted.
Right, so, I mean, I don't, you know, if it's necessary to put that in.
I'm gonna have them strike that link.
Yeah, 'cause it creates a sense...
It could very well not be there.
Right.
They'll think there was a...
The link might be there, but the page will be empty.
Which link was that?
The enhancing East Long Meadow to improve business, commercial, and industrial zoning.
Even if the link's there, it was never accepted.
No, it was never accepted.
It was a great idea, but just never got out of the starter's box.
Okay, so, if there's not, nothing else, then we need a motion to approve with the amendments that we made.
So, I'll put a motion out there, a motion to approve community paradigm associates' profile statement for the town manager search with amendments agreed upon on our October eighth, two thousand nineteen council meeting.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. I will communicate with Mr. Lynch later this evening and advise him of those necessary changes, and this should be able to fly with him and be out in the world of professional searches sometime tomorrow. Okay?
Thank you.
Should we let Mary?
Yeah, we can ask Mary McNally to return.
I have a question.
Yes.
I have a question, a resident of, it's gonna be on the town website.
This as well?
The...
The profile?
Yeah.
It certainly can be. Once we get the PDF from him, you're welcome to have Ryan put it up.
Okay.
Actually, it makes good sense that it is there.
It does make good sense. We just might get a resident.
Okay, we can move on now to the town manager search screening committee update, and I can do that quickly with you right now. A couple of weeks back, three or so probably, Mr. Florence put a, at our request, put an ad in the reminder, or a news article in the reminder, seeking interested residents for the screening committee. The charge of the committee will be after the consultant receives the applications and does the initial screening to remove applicants that they don't deem fit the bill. The screening committee will, with Mr. Lynch, review the, let's, I'll pick a number, say twenty-five applicants, and reduce that number to eight, and those eight applicants will be invited for an interview with the screening committee and with Mr. Lynch as the facilitator. The charge of the committee would be to reduce the eight applicants to four that they feel they can attach the word finalist to. Those four names will come to the council, and we will set up public interviews and move, take it from there. That request for interested parties ended yesterday. It said you could apply through the seventh of October, and that a committee would, the screening committee members would be identified and appointed by around October fifteenth. Given the timeframe here, they're not needed until at the very earliest, November ninth, so there's no urgency this evening to take any action there. I don't believe it has to come publicly before the council. It can simply be a review of the applicants to make sure, obviously, first, that they're residents, and the question was, what do you bring to the committee? What talent would you bring to the committee in terms of helping to screen? And so, right now, as of last evening, we have, you didn't get any more today, Jeannie, did you? So, we have ten, and we need to, originally, we spoke about appointing a screening committee of five. I would like to reconsider that and suggest a committee of seven. And seven was something, if you think back to when Mr. Lynch spoke with us, he said five to seven is appropriate. You go beyond that, it gets unwieldy. If you go too few, and on the day of the interviews, one or two are, one may be ill or another one, something came up, then you're left with two or three folks sitting at the table, making far too important of a decision by themselves. So, I would recommend that we settle on the number seven as opposed to five for those reasons. What's...
It's fine with me. That makes sense.
In this day and age, people are busy and things happen.
Well, I mean, you could say, you know, December first is an interview date, and then somebody has a family emergency.
A Christmas party.
Or a Christmas party, everybody understands that. So, we'll get that committee seated, and I'll give all that information to Mr. Lynch, and he can move forward with it after that. We don't have to be involved until four names are identified to us. Three or four, I should say, three or four.
Okay.
So, with that concern, if we appoint seven members, I'd like to see it that at least five have to be present during it, so in case two people are sick, so that way there are four people that show up.
I think if that were to happen, Bernie would have to simply reschedule the interview date, but we can, we can say that to him, and just those are marching orders to him.
That's perfect.
Like, if it fell apart on you that people can't be there, and you're down to four, push it off.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Just for clarification, he's the facilitator, but he's gonna be the chair of the committee from what I recall seeing in the past. But recently, I saw something that says they're gonna appoint the chair.
I believe he said they would appoint a chair, the committee itself would appoint its chair, some, you know, a chair to kind of facilitate, but he does manage the activity in the room. He has to, that's part of his job.
Right. So, I questioned, why do they need a chair if he's gonna be there to facilitate and direct the discussions and make all the appointments and do all the work that the chair would have done?
I guess I never thought about it that deeply.
I think I'll defer to him, whatever the protocol, some other communities, if it's more of a titular position.
I think it's more of a titular, and I'm going to say that the chair will be the individual reporting to us that these are the names, and at that point, the names will be made public, and then we'll schedule the public interviews. I think it's more titular than anything.
I just wanna prevent what I perceive had happened in the past...
Okay.
With the screening committee, where there was too much sway in the appointment and discussions of individuals.
I'm not privy to that. If you want to have a phone conversation with Bernie to maybe explain that at some point, that's also not time urgent right now. I don't foresee us getting to interviews based on this closing date till late November, early December. Anything else? Okay, we can move to number, new business D four, approval of additional hours for the acting town manager.
Extend my life expectancy.
Extended or shortened?
Shortened.
I have a comment to the chair, that I'd like to share with the board. Last week, I stopped in to visit with Mary, and I was gonna limit that conversation to approximately three minutes. Approximately four and a half hours later, I left, and we discussed many topics from A to Z, and tried to put them in a chronological order and prioritize where we wanna be at a certain point in time. And I can only say that I feel that a lot of those issues are time-sensitive, and it would be impossible for her to be able to fulfill those obligations, responding to time on task at eighteen hours a week. So, my sentiment walking away from that meeting was that thirty hours would be a good number. It could probably allocate time for her to be there approximately, maybe six hours a day, five days a week, or be able to arrange that schedule any way that would work best for the town and your personal schedule.
Yeah, I agree.
So, and I might add that when we started into these preliminary conversations back, and we chose a number of roughly eighteen to twenty, it was predicated on benefits, if you will. And Mary has exercised the option to waive the benefits so there'd be no negative financial ramifications regarding benefits. So, I walked away thinking that we're gonna slide backwards if we don't move these hours forward, and that would be my recommendation.
I would echo that. I have tried to, Mary and I try to meet once a week to, in my mind, I'm helping transition by providing background information similar, analogous to the interview we gave to Business West, and if we don't add some hours here, I think we're, our situation is gonna be self-defeating because we're sliding, and there are certain issues that bear time on task that can't be relegated to eighteen hours a week. If you just add what Mike said to what I did last week, we ate up, between the two of us, seven hours, and well, there's a third of the work week just in conversation about planning, so...
I just had one piece of that. And what you discussed with her and what I discussed were a hundred and eighty degrees out. There was that much coming at us from, that's why I said A to Z, but...
Through the chair, I have a question. I, actually, when I learned the plan for the hours for the acting manager as being part-time, I understand, obviously, the financial piece.
part-time, I understand, obviously, the financial piece to what we do, or what you did, to, you know, to make that decision, I also understand the issue of benefits. However, when we were in this position before, was Denise part-time?
No.
I don't believe so.
She was an interim manager, but at full-time. I think she was full-time.
I believe so, I believe maybe some of the responsibilities prior to Denise with Bob Parent was...
Was, that was simply on a part-time.
His time was split between.
Okay, because he was split between his own responsibilities.
And Denise was hired as the acting manager before she was appointed.
The permanent search yielded her.
Right, right. I'm just, I'm just looking at the scope of the responsibilities within the position and all the moving pieces, and, you know, whatever we can do, we know that benefits aren't involved at this point, whatever we can do to make it work for our town. It's, you know, we're doing, I was impressed by all the time that's been spent just on the ambulance, and that's one topic, situation alone. And so, you know, we wanna succeed, and you can't do it if we tie people's hands behind their back, so I would approve increasing hours. Anyone else?
Actually, I have a question with regards to part-time as compared to full-time. The reason we had said the 18 hours was to make sure it was considered a part-time.
We didn't trigger, right.
And we didn't trigger it. What is the number of hours before it gets triggered legally in our town?
I think that's more of a state thing or federal. It's 19, once you hit the 20th hour, you must offer the individual benefits.
So, at any time, once we, once she goes over the 20 hours, even though she, now she waves on...
We'd be compelled to offer, but she can decline them, and then, so you've met the...
Then she can make, she can change her mind at any time.
Theoretically, yes.
But that would've been the situation with the previous acting town manager as well.
She was, correct.
Okay. My insurances are in place, and they're settled.
And I, I realize that, but there, but there was, there was a reason behind us offering part-time, knowing we're still financially obligated, and that's the reason that we came up with a part-time position that still holds true, but I do realize that more hours are necessary. I mean, we can't, we can't look at 18 hours to run a $60 million company.
Exactly.
Like I said, I, I just...
And with the vacancies, at least, at least...
Right, and we had a personal...
Vacancies are definitely not...
HR being a big vacancy, so we, we felt that the funding was there, but most importantly, we, we can't slide backwards. Like you said, Ralph, it's a $60 million business, and we're not able to keep up with the time on task at 18 hours a week.
So, if we increase, do we have to adjust the budget for the department, or is there enough funds already budgeted?
My understanding, when, when I spoke with Sarah Menard about this back in August, she will, there's not a budget set for it, what she will do is watch how the number progresses, and if she feels there's going to be an overage in that line item, which would be town manager's salary, then she has strategies that she can use to transfer money so that we wouldn't be deficit spending in one line item. Does that answer your question?
May I?
Yes.
I had a conversation with her, Sarah, this morning on this topic, knowing it was on your agenda, and I am being paid from the town manager's line item, as is the former town manager. Those funds will expire probably by February.
Right, it was February and March.
The entire fiscal year is funding, paying me, and the suggestion, the, the strategy that Sarah Menard opined about today was that there'd be a transfer from free cash to supplement.
Right.
Because it will definitely be an overage.
Well, yes, there's no doubt that we'll, we'll reach a tipping point, but Sarah was comfortable that we have strategies we can employ, like that, or stabilization fund that will cover that overage, because one individual exited, and we have another one in the same line item concurrently. Does that make sense to everyone?
Yeah. So, we're looking to only extend to 30, then? We think 30 hours would be sufficient?
I, I think we could, we can revisit anything down the road, but I think it's a good interim step at this point in time, based on the workload, so...
Did we ask her if she wants to work 30?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. So, that being said...
I'm fine with it, thank you for asking.
That being said, I'll ask for a motion.
Sure.
Motion to approve additional hours for the acting town manager from 18 hours per week, not to exceed 30 hours per week.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. I will alert Sarah about this so that she can be prepared for that. Okay, we are now down to summary, action items for next meeting. I believe we don't have any specific action items for our November, what is our November date, Jeannie? November, I mean, October.
October.
October 22nd.
Yes.
Okay. So, now we are down to number 10, executive session, and this evening, we do have an executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation regarding Rear Peas Road, otherwise known as parcel 33 dash 1 dash 0. We have also referred to Rear Peas Road as Zero Peas Road, so I don't wanna confuse the public there, I, for whatever reason, they appear to be interchangeable. In order to move into executive session, we need a roll call vote, and unless I'm reading the agenda incorrectly, we will be returning to open session only for the purpose of adjournment. So, I need someone to make that motion.
I'll make a motion to leave open session and proceed to executive session, return to open session for the purpose of adjournment only.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. This is a roll call vote.
Aye. Marilyn Richards, aye.
Ralph Page, aye.
Don Anderson, aye.
Kathleen Hill, aye.
Michael Kane, aye.
Tom O'Connor, aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We will be moving now into executive session.